Anybody speak for it?
I don't know.
Nobody ever speaks in favor.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Ah, these are some of the union guys with the, you know.
Well, that's true.
If they're talking building a union.
If they were smart and had built up their support.
Yeah, they would have been a crowd of people in there.
Yeah. Yep.
Ready?
Good.
Thank you. All right, I'll call this meeting of the Porter County Election Board to order, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Member Tim?
Here.
Member Tittister?
Here.
Vice President Lo?
Here.
Vice President Roche?
Here.
Secretary Bailey here.
Clerk's report.
Um, short and sweet. Today's the last day of school board filings. Last week went to the clerk's conference. It was all heavy election, so it was pretty good. I've got some PowerPoints to send over to the office, to the elections girls. And IVRA for them is July 11th and 12th, so not during a meeting.
Okay. I see our directors can't be with us for this month, so we'll defer the director's report. Members of the board should have received electronically a copy of the May meeting minutes. And if there are no alterations or questions, I ask for a motion to accept as written.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, campaign finance reports.
Okay, we have these two coming before you today. Um, I believe one of those people is here today. And the two that we have is the late amendments to reports. One of them, one of the two reports is Jennifer McAllen, and we've had questions about her notice, and we've deferred it to another month, and we are now backed up to this month. I did send her out notice. It was sent out by letter and by certified mail. The letter did not come back. She's not here, but we've tried this a couple different, on a couple different months. The other one that you have before you is Dawn Miller, and she's present here. Correct? You're Dawn?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure. Thank you. And actually, I will tell you that Jennifer's went out before Dawn's, so Dawn's here, Jennifer's not.
All right, we, and we don't know if Jennifer's gonna make it.
And her fine is ten dollars, and Dawn's is twenty.
Correct.
Monica, Mr. Forrester's here, too.
Oh, wonderful. Okay.
Bob's here.
Okay. Thank you. That, we'll take that up separately. I think I know what that one's about.
Okay.
All right, I'll read this into the record to set the proceedings here. We are here today to hear information concerning the delinquent and/or defective filing of annual reports by several people. The hearing was set by the board at our prior meeting. Public notice of this meeting has been provided. This matter is being recorded, and I am requesting that the county clerk please ensure that the audio recording of these proceedings are maintained as part of our record. The matters that are set forth before us today involve Indiana Code IC-3-9-4-17. Section A requires that any individual who fails to file with the county election board a report in the manner required under IC-3-9-5 is subject to civil penalty. The purpose of these proceedings is to determine if such penalties need to be applied to the persons who have been asked to appear. Indiana Code provides that if the county election board determines that a person failed to file an annual or amended report or statement of organization by the deadline prescribed under this article, the board shall assess a civil penalty. In this case, the penalties are ten and twenty dollars for the people that are called before us today. The penalty begins with the afternoon of the final date for filing the report or statement being calculated as the first day. The civil penalty under this subsection may not exceed. There are statutory limits to those. Ms. Conrad's already explained to us notice that was given to these proceedings. At this time, I'll call on anyone who intends to speak before the board relative to these hearings to please rise and be sworn in, and to know that any and all fines assessed by this board shall be payable within thirty days of this hearing, or shall revert to a full amount. All right, anyone who's gonna speak, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the evidence you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have a preference on how we wanna go? Jennifer, right, is not with us?
Right, she is not here. So, given that this is our, this is not the first time that we've tried to bring her before the board. If the board seeks, wishes to, it can upon its motion just do a default, and we could adopt findings in fact at the next meeting, it would be the amount of ten dollars.
And thi- this is our third attempt to speak to Jennifer?
Um, let me check real quick. I believe so. It's either our second or our third. Um, I did a notice with, this is our, we tried to bring her in in April. I sent out notice in April for the April meeting, and this is our second attempt. This is for June. This is, we've had, we've had to send out notices to her a year ago. So this, but this one was just the one for the, she has had other waivers and agreements a year ago on other fines. The one coming before you is with regard to being late in returning in her amendments, which were due with the pre-primary, or actually, this is with the annual, so this, we're trying to get, we sent out notice for her in April to be there in April. She did not appear. I was, I had some concerns that I raised to the board about notice. I forgot to bring her back in May, so we're bringing her back in June. So this is her second notice.
I'll make a motion to approve the entry of the default judgment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Dawn, you wanna go?
Sure, I'll go. Okay, so I'm a little confused and upset, so I'm gonna try to keep my composure. Because, look, primary was May 7th. I didn't get notification from anybody that there was anything needed to be amended. So I get notification on the 4th. I meet with a friend to get everything, you know, situated, but I didn't have my password. Can't, can't do that out, out of hours. Sorry, I'm, again, frustrated trying to keep. Obviously, I came from work. I'm losing money. You guys are charging me twenty bucks. How much does your attorney charge you? I'm just curious. Just trying to see how this plays out. Twenty dollars? I mean, this seems like a wasteful receipt.
Bad shoe, but.
Because, I mean, if I would have been, you know, in the know that I needed to file the amendment way before, over a month after primary passed, I would have taken care of it. It was negative eighty-five cents. And my account was never in the negative. Not one time. So.
To, to clarify, Ms. Miller, because I know our directors aren't here, but I just wanna make sure. You were notified to do an amendment to your campaign finance report sometime in May, is that right? When they were doing the amendments?
If I was, how was I notified? Because there was not one time that I had been notified to amend anything, not once. I mean, for eighty-five cents, I would have taken care of that the day after primary, had I known.
What we have is that you were a day late in getting it turned in, getting the amendment turned in.
You had what?
You, you were a day late in getting your amendment turned in.
I understand that, but you just said that there's a.
But wait, let me ask you this question.
Hold on a second.
No, no, no.
Uh, you said that there was a record of something that I.
amended.
I'm, I'm sorry, can I please finish my thought? Thank you. You said that there was something sent to me saying that I needed to amend it. How was that sent to me? Was it by email, text? Was it mail? I'm just curious.
I, I'm sorry, this is the board. You can direct your questions to the board.
So let me ask you, you filed an amended report that was a day late then, Monica?
That's correct.
How did you know that you needed to file an amended report if you never got notice?
Because Kennard told me when I saw him at an event.
So you.
So I never got notice, and never got any mail, never got texts, never got an email, nothing.
How did you get notice of today's proceedings?
You guys made sure I got those.
Yeah.
Made sure. I mean, I got a, a couple different, oh, and email as well.
Yeah.
Nothing else. I can, I, I'll let you guys see the emails. I never received anything. Again, it's not, eighty-five cents in the negative, I would have fixed it right away.
I'm sorry, she was two, it was two days late, so it's a twenty dollar fine on her.
I'm just trying to understand how she didn't get notice, and, and you're, you're suggesting to the board that if you wouldn't have bumped into Mr. Kennard, you would still not know that you had a report due. Is that sort of generally it? If you had not seen him out somewhere, that's how you learned of?
Yeah, that's how I learned of it. Yes. Yep.
So is, is this your first time that you've come in front of us for this?
This is my first time ever running for anything. This is my first time doing campaign finance reports on my own.
But would, and would a waiver have not been an option here then?
I did offer a waiver.
Okay.
I was told that I still had to be here, and I was also told that the election, the election.
Sign the waiver. No, you don't have to be here.
Yeah, the waiver a lot.
Does the election board, uh, I'm sorry, does the office close at four thirty?
Yes.
Because I work until after four thirty, so there's no way for me to pay that. I mean, I work in Mariville, so it, it's inconvenient.
Yeah, I think, because I know she called my office, my paralegal told her that she could do the waiver and make payment to the waiver, or she could show, or she could show up. So the waiver was sent to her. So I think the question, the concern that I'm hearing, and if I'm wrong, is that there was no way for her to get the payment.
Except for the payment could have been mailed in, could it not have?
Yeah, it can be mailed in.
There's ways in which this could have all been avoided, as it seems.
Well, I think it could have been avoided a long time before this, had I gotten notification that it needed to be amended.
Okay.
If we're going down that route, it could have been avoided a long time ago. I mean, a day after.
We don't have our directors here to be able to answer.
Too bad that you don't, because I, I took off work to come here. I'm losing money on top of being, you know, summoned to come in front of you guys.
The directors.
Well, you have to understand the frustration on our end as well, because you have a statutory obligation to go through these steps. When you decided to run for office, you agreed to those obligations, which included filing accurate campaign finance reports. We were kind enough to notify you that there was a discrepancy with your report that needed to be corrected.
Well, how come it was done sooner?
Our job.
Why wasn't it?
Because if you had filed the correct report, this would never be an issue, correct?
If I had done it, if I had.
Is that, is that correct?
No, it's not correct. No, it's not correct.
Okay.
It's not.
Okay.
It's absolutely not. Do I look like a, I'm a finance master? No, I'm not. I did it on my own. So I made a, 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 uh, negative, eighty-five cents difference, excuse me, for eighty-five cents.
Eighty-five cents?
Again, was not even.
Still a discrepancy in campaign finance report.
If you guys did your job and, and notified me.
Our job, right?
Notified me, uh, get it.
That is not our job.
Twenty bucks, dude. Twenty dollars. You're, you're bringing me here, pause me. Really?
You need to understand, first of all, that it is not our job to notify you of when you're late and what you're late about.
I wasn't late. The whole thing was, I didn't know that my report needed to be amended.
Just suggested had we done our job and notified you of.
I suggested that because he said, but he.
I'm helping you understand that's not our job. I just want, add that on the record. It's not our job.
That's great.
You've sat through a number of these meetings with.
I sat through one.
One?
Of this, of, of your guys' meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah, one.
Okay.
I was here when my friend was being sued a thousand dollars. She didn't file anything. She didn't even open an account, absolutely nothing. You guys find her. There's other people that, oh, you find them, but then you, you reduce it to zero. Now, this person, you reduce it from a thousand to a hundred dollars, but, hmm, conveniently, others, you reduce to zero.
Can you share with me what that has to do?
You, that's the question. I'm just answering my way.
Didn't get notice.
You tell me how I didn't get noticed.
That is bothersome to me at the crux of this thing.
The procedure is snail mail and.
I don't understand what happened.
The procedure is snail mail and email, and by email. Did they have the correct email for you?
Yes.
That is not what I was told.
That you don't have the correct?
I was told that at the time, you did not update your email with them, and you have since updated it after the fact.
I don't see.
You called in.
I don't see how that's accurate, but I know they, I know everybody's had my email. And I never got anything in the mail. If it was something as simple as just amending it, I would have done it. It just, it wouldn't make sense to get notification and not doing it, do anything with it.
You, you, I'm just sorry to get clarification from the board. You said something about eight, ninety-eight cents. Is that the correction you had to make on your report, something about ninety-eight cents?
I'm sorry?
You said something about ninety-eight cents.
No, it was like eighty-five cents.
Is that, is that what you had to do to correct your report? You had to correct your report on eighty-five cents?
Yes, it's all been fixed.
But something on your report required you to put it, to make a difference of eighty-five, on, on, on the report itself?
Yes.
Okay, because.
And I have all my receipts. Everything's, I mean, I made a, you know, an error.
Okay.
On one column.
Okay, so that's with regard to what you had to do to correct the report, correct?
Yes, that's why I needed to correct the report. And I, again, I did not get notification by mail, email, phone, nothing.
So that.
To amend it.
So that correction came to you somehow verbally from Mr. Kennard?
The, the correction came from when I saw Kennard.
Okay.
And he said, hey, you need to amend your tax, or your campaign finance report.
Okay, so Mr. Taylor kind of verbally said you gotta fix this, and, and you knew what to do, and you went in and fixed it.
I'm sorry?
So Mr. Taylor notified you that you had to go in and fix something, and you went in and fixed it after talking to him?
I, yes, I did. I went in and fixed it after he had brought it to my attention, yes.
Okay.
He told you specifically what needed to be fixed at an event, like he remembered specifically?
I did not put in money that I actually deposited. I, it, it came, I can, I didn't bring it with me, but I can bring it up to your guys' office. You can see every receipt that I have.
So, just so that everybody's clear, um, the way that the statute works is that there is, once, once the reports have been looked at by the election board, then there's a notification that goes out to you. And Mr. Taylor's involved in helping with that, too, and.
But I never got notification from the board. I've not got one piece of notification.
If I have a turn? Is that all right?
Yes, please, go ahead, but please take the facts, because I'd never received a notification.
Respectfully, can you allow me for a moment? Once that, that those reports get reviewed, then the process is that there is a notification to you by email and by snail mail. And from that point in time, once you're notified, it's, it, the statute says you have five days, but the board has kind of indicated, they give you a little bit of grace period. I think it's about eight days, actually, is what they create as the due date. So that due date gets then logged. It sounds like you ran into Mr. Taylor someplace around the time of the due date. When you went in to fix it, that was probably two days after the internal deadline, because your fine amount is twenty dollars, which means it was just two days late.
Right.
As opposed to being a hundred dollars, which would be the maximum amount of the fine. So ten days late or more. So that's what that twenty dollars would say to the board.
So what would have happened had I not seen Kennard at one of the GOP meetings? I'm just curious. What would have happened? I mean, obviously, I would have gotten this, saying, hey, you owe us X amount of dollars. This is, I mean, other than seeing him, I have not received text message, I have not seen, received an email. I have not received anything. Mail, nothing. I mean, as soon as I got this, I reached out. I'm like, hey, let's get this taken care of, please.
That's the part that I don't quite understand. If that's a true statement, I don't know how that happened.
What I was told was, at the time that she reached out, when she received the letter, is the time that the email was updated. She was sent in the email that she, that we had on file, as well as snail mail, the amendment.
So did you receive something postal service?
I have not received anything.
Other than?
Other than this? No, I have not.
And, and this that you're referring to, that's, that was sent by my office, did you get the, did you get the mailed copy or the?
I got the mail, and then I got the, is it?
UPS?
UPS, thank you.
Did UPS, that one.
And then I got the email.
Okay.
After, saying that it may have not been the correct address or something.
Okay.
But other than that, that's all I've received.
So the letter that is on the, what you have received there, is that the correct letter? Is that your correct address?
Yep.
So that's what we should, should have or would have used in sending an initial mail? Is that correct? We didn't, you didn't, you haven't changed your address?
No, I have not.
And that letter is dated June 12th?
Yep.
Yeah, that was, I sent, I. And that's, uh, 158 Michigan Avenue. Correct?
I'm sorry?
158?
157.
157, oh, sorry, 157 Michigan Avenue, apartment six, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's it. I just used the address that I was.
I would prefer that we did not put my address out there. I mean, that's.
Sorry.
Yeah.
If I use the address that Sunday had provided to me, so my, I would assume then that Sunday used the same address as Tuesday.
Yeah, but we can't make the record that we know that first mailing was received. That's the one I'm struck.
Well, it didn't come back to the office.
Well, Jessica, what was this piece with the email address? That there was an email address on file that had been?
There was an original email address on file, and then now there is an updated email address on file.
And how recently was that changed?
When this letter was received and Ms. Miller called the office, there was an updated.
Both those email addresses are valid.
My letter was on June 12th.
So the first email address was, was valid?
It's still valid, yes. I just gave them my campaign email. The other one was my personal one.
Okay.
But yeah, it's still valid.
In our normal procedure, it would have been to send that notification via email to an email address that you say is correct, and to an address that you say is correct, but you're saying you got neither of those.
I'm sorry, what? But just repeat what you just said.
Well, you're up here indicating that you were not notified of the fact that you needed to file an amendment.
I was not.
And what we're saying from our side is, the standard procedure would be to have sent you notice two ways. Via email to that address that you just acknowledged is correct, and then.
Right, absolutely.
And then to the address, which you, again, just acknowledged is correct.
Absolutely, so obviously, if both of those are correct, I should have received it, and I did not. Why would I sit here and say, oh, I didn't receive it? I just love to miss work, and I love to, you know, lose money. That's not, that's just dumb.
Well, I mean, I guess I kind of see two paths forward here then. I mean, I suppose that we could carry this over to our July meeting if we wanted to, so that we have the directors here to be able to provide their input as to how the notice was provided with regards to the need to provide the amendment. Or alternatively, if you wanted to, to go ahead and agree to pay the twenty dollar fine, we can resolve this today and be.
No, I would actually like to go to the next meeting.
Okay.
Would honestly like to know where it was sent.
Okay.
That, that would make a lot of sense.
I will make a motion to carry this matter over to the July meeting then.
Okay.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And I, I will just say, though, because you've made mention of this several times, that, you know, missing work and losing money, if you agreed to this today, it would be done. There would be.
No, I'm agreeing to it, because I've already missed work, and, and I'm already losing out money. But just to be able to come back and be able to have the proof, that's worth it to me, because I can prove.
All right.
I never received.
And again, my point was just that there was options here, because you had raised that as a concern several times.
Right, I get that. Thank you.
Okay.
All righty.
So.
We're just, we're gonna.
We have, so we have, um, thank you, Board Member Tittister, for letting me know who Robert Forrester is.
Okay.
Um, I was not aware. I recognize my face, my name. I can give you an update, and if you want to come forward. So what happened with Mr. Forrester is, we gave him notice to be here. Oh, gosh, I think it was in.
I think it was March.
I think it was earlier than that, yeah. Hang on a minute.
First notice, I believe, was in February.
Okay, February, thank you. So he was notified to be here in February, and, um, at that time, either he was a no-show.
No, at that time, he asked.
To be carried.
That he couldn't attend that meeting and asked to be at a date, informed, and he would be at the March meeting.
Right. And then we sent out another notice for the March meeting, and he did not appear at the March meeting.
Correct.
And we didn't hear from him.
I had stopped in the office prior to the March meeting to turn in what I believe was the final amendment to the paperwork.
Let me, let me, I'll, we'll give you your chance. Let me just get the history a little bit, okay? Then, then I sent out notice to Mr. Forrester on March the 8th with a letter at that time for him to be present at the March meeting. Um, so that was the second notice that went out, and we did not hear from him. At the March meeting, there was the decision to enter in a default, and we did findings of fact, adopted the findings of fact and conclusions at the April meeting. The fine amount in the default amount was a thousand dollars. And that was then sent to Mr. Forrester via mail and via certified mail as a default. I believe, um, you know, and I know Mr. Forrester reached out to my office. I believe we spoke. I'm trying to remember. Um, I know he reached out to Jessica as well, within that thirty-day window, after receipt of the findings of fact, and wanted to know what to do about that. I, you know, it was at that time, and that was before we can come back to the board meeting, and I have in the findings of fact that there is a right to appeal that within thirty days. And I believe we had some discussion. It's like, this has already been a. And I believe we had some discussion. It's like, this has already been adopted by the board, so I'm not sure what we would do with it, because it's a judgment that the board has already entered into. So, with that, that's the background leading up to today, and Mr. Forrester is here before you. Now, you can, you can add whatever you'd like.
Okay. My wife has COPD. In February, middle of February, we went to Indianapolis, and she had a lung procedure done in the hospital for four days and came home. The procedure was not as much of a success as the doctor had hoped. During this period of time, I was going through and doing the amendment, finally accepted. When I received the notice for the March meeting, I came to the office in the, the other building and told them I was unable to attend that, because my wife had a follow-up appointment with the doctor, Dr. Weller from IU Health in Indianapolis, and I wasn't going to be able to attend that March meeting. And then after that, I received a certified letter saying that I had a fine of $1,000 to pay. I would appreciate some consideration for what's been going on. My wife is still not in good health. Both of us have lung problems. Not your concern, but both of us, a combination of 12 prescription drugs that are taken each month by us. So, I would ask for your kindness, your forgiveness, in reducing this $1,000 fine.
So, just so I understand the facts a little bit better, was this an annual report, then, Monica, that we were dealing with?
Mm-hmm, yes.
It's an annual report, okay.
Yes, yeah, so it was the $50 a day fine going up to $1,000.
And has the annual report now been filed?
Yes, but he also had the second fine for $10 for the amendment being one day late.
But that's not part of the $1,000 default judgment, then? That stands outside of that, as a...
Yes, actually, $1,010 is what he owes in all.
When you came into the office, do you recall who you spoke with?
No, I don't.
So, the last communication you would have had with somebody was before that March meeting to indicate that you also could not attend that?
Yes, yeah, and that was over on, is it Franklin or whatever, where the...
Yeah, the new location.
And were you told that you needed to have a designee?
Pardon?
Were you told you needed to have a designee?
No.
Because that was the exact same thing we gave Holly. Holly was unable to attend, and we were told, we told her she had to have somebody there. It was the same meeting, or the same...
It would be Holly Taylor?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was the same meeting.
Because she also wasn't, was unable to attend the first one, and, but when she reached out, it was immediate to rectify the entire solution.
Monica, do you know, based, and I don't know if this is a question in order to the directors, when was the actual annual report then filed?
I do not know.
Okay.
Mr. Forrester might know.
I, I don't know if I, if there was a, a final... I can't read this one here, something of 24 at 12:10. I can't read the timestamp on this one, if that was it.
So, Mr. Forrester, just again, kind of further clarify things. I mean, unlike the prior case where there was a dispute as the notice, you're not disputing notice?
No.
You're just indicating that due to medical appointments for your wife, that you were unable to attend those February and March meetings?
And my misunderstanding of what needed to be done on the report, because I ended up, I believe, amending it three times before I finally got it right. And I told my wife, I said, "I guess I got it right, because they haven't contacted me with any yellow lines across there to fill in and answer that stuff."
And this is the first time for you?
Yes, sir, and it will be the last.
So, Monica, to the extent that this board were willing to do so, would we have to, like, amend our previously entered findings if we wanted to change that default judgment? Is that how you would see that being memorialized? I mean, it would either have to be, like, amended and restated findings, or like, an amended finding, I would, I would...
Right.
I think I would...
That's what kind of made this, that's a great question. That's what made that, this, all of this a little bit complex.
Sure.
Because they were kind of final entered orders under the Administrative Procedures Act, which with notice of that if he disputed that, he could take it on to court, meaning he had 30 days to do that. I'm not sure if Mr. Forrester contacted legal counsel. You know, I kind of, I maybe, I, maybe I thought I heard somewhere along the way that he was looking at that. You know, what would happen next, because nothing did get filed, is that it's going to go, which is on your agenda, would go to collections, and then within a collection proceeding, then it would be, you know, if you've had experience with collection proceedings and you're working with whomever's during collections and trying to figure out payment, payment plans, or however is going to deal with that in a collection proceeding.
I really...
That's, so that's, I mean, I'm, I've kind of, you know, it seemed like a law school exam of question in terms of what do you, what do you do with the final entry of order as a body? Can the body go back and, you know, take the default judgment and, and change the default judgment? I hadn't really looked at that very closely, because I just didn't really know how the board would want to go about that.
I'm assuming we've never done it before.
No.
No.
Everything else that we have, will we have a default judgment, is going to the collection agency?
Well, and I don't know, in fairness, too, I don't know that we've ever had somebody come after the entry of a default judgment. I mean, the time, this is much further along in the process than prior issues we've dealt with.
Right.
I have a perfect credit record. I really don't want this to go to collections. Need a blemish at this point in my life.
I know I did get a contact from the party chair, and I think the party chair was trying to counsel Mr. Forrester. And I was like, I'm not sure how I could, I'm not sure what I could coun, counsel him, because we do have the final decision on this. You know, I kind of speculated with him. I said, "I suppose if he was filing appeal, there's always ways to resolve appeal once it's in an appeal state." But I know that we had another individual that was really, really late, and I think she had a default and came before us, and there was, I thought it was she was defaulted, or she just, it took us a while to get her to come and maintained a thou, the $1,000 fine, and, you know, I think she kind of described to the board that she was unable. There were other people who, she was in a Valpo resident, and eventually, I think, the board stuck with that amount, and it got paid. I was, I think it was, I'm looking at Jessica, it was like, maybe $2,000 or $3,000, because she'd missed...
It was total, it was over $2,000, because it was multiple reports.
Multiple reports had been missing. It was a Mayoral, I think it was a Mayoral candidate.
Yes.
Valpo DMS paid it.
The Valpo DMS paid for it for him.
Yep, they paid it.
They did that.
But she, if you remember correctly, she said she only got $900 in social security.
Right. I do recall that, and that's what I had suggested to, you know, I said to the party chair when this came up. I said I, I was aware that that's how that got resolved with the other situation that came before the board. So, I'm not, I'm not sure what the pleasure of the board is on this.
Yeah, it's hard to know when you don't understand what the legal options are. Once we've done the findings, I'm not sure what we can do.
If the board would like to just take this under advisement until next month?
Is there a way to seek out answers as to whether, given the testimony, we have the authority to go back and amend the finding? Can we get an answer to that, do you think, or is there never going to be an answer, just what we want to do?
How about if we, we hold this over till July?
And, and seek those answers?
And I can kind of provide, if there's additional options that I don't, I'm not aware of at this time.
Are you amenable to that, Mr. Foster? We try to find some more answers here.
I would appreciate answer favorable to me, yes.
I understand.
Just, you know, what, best-case scenario, would probably be cut in half. It'd be 500 bucks. I mean, it's not going to give redo for stuff like this, man.
Well, I understand that I didn't, I understand that I didn't understand what I was supposed to be doing.
And that's only if we can do it without...
Yeah, yeah, because of the state of where this is at.
And that's only if we can do it without putting ourselves in double jeopardy. I mean, you got to understand our position, too.
Okay, I do.
I know you do.
All right, so we'll reconvene on this one as well next month, and hopefully...
What's, what's the date of that one, do you know?
Always the 4th Thursday of the month.
4th Thursday?
July 25th?
July, what is it?
25th?
Yeah.
Okay.
3 o'clock.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is that it for the campaign and portion of this?
Um, just the A part of it.
Yes.
We were approved by the commissioners to use the contract that's currently used by the clerk's office for Eagle accounts, so we don't have to enter into the contract and go before the commissioners and get all that stuff done. And so, we can just start using the collection agency immediately.
Okay.
So, just an update for the board.
And when we talk about doing that, are we going to refer, other than the two that we pushed to July?
No, all, all the outstanding, anything that's outstanding that we have not got collections on will be turned over to collections company and created, and then they can, they can create a...
I believe, I believe everyone on the sheet will be going to collections, now with the exception of Mr. Forrester.
Okay. Do you need anything? Do we need to do anything officially to take that step since it's...
I think that the board can take a motion to refer all of the outstanding fines that have not been paid to collections.
Do I have such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Hearings?
That's what we just did.
That's what we just did.
We are done.
Okay. Events?
Um, last week, the Elections Registration Office had a booth at the Porter County Health Department's Health and Wellness Fair. It was pretty hopping place down at Central Park from, I think, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM last Friday, and they were able to register for some people and give information about the upcoming general election. So, that was helpful. And then we will have a booth doing the same thing, including voting on the sticker for the general election at our fair booth this year from July 18th to the 27th. And then we will have an entry into the Pop, the Popcorn Festival Parade. We won't have a booth at the Popcorn Fest, but we will be in the parade. So, if any of you are bored and want to walk in the parade, you're more than welcome to join us. Maybe you can get a matching shirt. But I just wanted to update the board on the events that we have coming up this year.
Okay. Upcoming meetings?
July 25th at 3:00 PM and August 22nd at 3:00 PM.
It's the July one, the 25th?
25th.
The 5th?
Got to look at the August. August is 22?
Correct.
Any other business for this board? Public comment? State your name for the record, please?
Mm-hmm.
Jennifer Klug, 200 Franklin Street, Towne and Porter. When you talked about the collection agency, was this something that you, you have to take the fees for the collection agency out of the fees that are paid, or can you put the fee on top of it?
It'll be on top.
It, it will be on top?
Yes.
Okay, because I was going to suggest, if you're not allowed to put the fees from the collection agency on top, you can always talk to Rodney Poll, or I don't, Chuck Mosley's running for office again, so that's not sure if he's going to be in. You know, you got to wait. But if you wanted to, like, go to the state senator and the state representative and ask them to change the law to allow you to put the fees, for them to pay the fees on top of it, because that's, you know, government doesn't have a lot of money, and if you got to collect a fee, then, you know, they, they can always change the law. Laws get changed all the time, so, well, that, that's not necessary then, but thank you, though.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.